Okay. We call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, July 11th, 2022, 6:30 to 6:00 PM. Members absent, Kevin Charbonneau and Chris Vaschan are both absent. Others present include...
Are you wearing a phone?
Oh, you are? Okay. Thank you. I didn't recognize your number. So Mr. Charbonneau is present by phone. Others include Ms. John Wilson and Melissa Pedersen. City Clerk Treasurer, James Johnson, and City Manager, Laura Dogen. The next item is to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of 20 June 22.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Pedersen. Discussion on the minutes.
I have a comment. The question that I asked was not would the council have a meeting on Juneteenth? It was would the city recognize Juneteenth? Different question.
I think you asked how we would go forward with Juneteenth.
Yes. It's a federal holiday. Would the city be recognizing it?
I think John's right with the go forward. He said he would.
Yeah.
Move to another day. Anything else on the minutes?
No.
So basically, it says Pam Lazz commented on the council meeting on Juneteenth. And that's in Mr. Wilson noted that the next time the meeting could be moved to another day.
That was not my question, though. And that was not actually what John Wilson said. But that's okay.
I think that's what he said. That's what I wrote down.
Okay. Anything else on the minutes?
No.
Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Kevin.
Mr. Charbonneau, are you an aye?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Ann Shirello. Raise explanation.
Yeah, briefly. I think the voters, including myself, of Newport are entitled to an explanation. Three of you voted for a 7% increase in raises for the non-union employees. And that decision will have an impact, I'm sure, on all employees. And it will have an impact on how much our taxes are raised next year. And so each of you who voted yes for the increase, I would like for the record an explanation of why you voted yes and what you considered in terms of the pluses and the minuses of doing so. And that would be the mayor, Chris Vaschan, who's absent tonight, and Kevin Charbonneau.
Okay, thank you.
And when can I expect those explanations?
I do not discuss what was discussed in executive session.
But you're not asking you...
I have my reasons that I voted the way I did. I said I reluctantly voted to support it. And that's my... I know I'm not going to go into all the details of what we discussed.
I'm not asking you what was said in executive session. I'm asking you to state why you voted for the raise. That's all?
I voted the way I did. And that's all I can say.
And then Kevin?
Excuse me. I ask the council members if they wish to speak, not you.
Okay, that's fine. I was just reminding you that I had asked Kevin as well.
Mr. Charbonneau? Do you care to answer the question?
Quite simply, they deserve the raise. Not only for the class of Willie, but for the taxpayer work they're doing. I do not believe it will affect their taxes. That's my explanation.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. The next item is the 911 address authorization. The fire chief here. So the E-91...
I believe you have the basic information in your package. What it is is a piece property over on Bluff Road. A new structure is going on. And it involves Columbia Forest Products and Jim Mulkin's building. And under normal circumstances, because of the third structure going on, it would require a private road name and then renumbering of the buildings. The new building that's going in requested to be able to use the right-of-way that exists as opposed to having their address on Willie Street. Because you will be having large truck traffic delivering so forth and so on. And Willie Street is not conducive to 54-foot trailers. Okay? The issue came up when Mr. Mulkin spoke to me about it, about the stress that it would put notifying literally thousands of customers between Indian Head and tenants in his building to have to do a change of address. So I met with them. I met with Phil Aramey, the new building that's going in there. We talked at great length. And it was requested that I reach out to 911 and see if there was a way we could make it work. So I did that. I spent about a half hour with the 911 coordinator. And we came up with a plan to allow it to happen. And in order to allow it to happen, they will be putting their address numbers on their signs on Bluff Road. And they will have those reflective green numbers on their buildings. And Phil will put one on his building and it be lighted. The concern and the reason why is they will have a Bluff Road address and they're on the right side of the road, which would be even numbers. Because that's the way 911 works. His building is on the left side of the right-of-way. So technically, if it was turned into a new road, he'd have an odd number and the other two buildings would have even numbers. So by him putting his number, his new number, on the building and being lit, if there was a situation down in there, a responder would be able to identify the building.
Is there going to be access from Willie Street?
No.
No. Okay. That's what I saw. I was just looking at that. That was my question. So this is just going to go right through the existing driveway?
They all understand there's another parcel land at the end of that. That if somebody were to buy that and put a building on it, then there would be no choice. It would have to be a named road and they would all have to change their numbers. This is a one-time, one-shot, non precedent sending exception. And the 911 coordinator just asked if I take it to the council and get their blessing in order to be able to do it.
So the building on the side is... The building's going in actually with a number. It's pretty much...
Correct. Right, basically where the number and the X are. It's a one acre piece. We talked about entering on Willie and driving off on the access and all sorts of different ways. And it just, this was the only way to do it safely and keep traffic off of Willie Street because there are young families over there. And it's a very narrow, tree-lined street that would be challenging for out-of-state truckers to get in. If they get in there accidentally following their GPS, getting them out would be the more dangerous.
Have our own version of smuggling?
Absolutely.
We could have another claim to fame.
Sorry. Go ahead, Melissa. I just had my question answered. It was just...
Yeah, so it sort of just went right out of my head. I already forgot. So there you go.
Okay. I've had that problem before.
I've got one. You're saying on the right side, they're even numbers. And how are we justifying he's on the right side? Why can't he be...
Because he's on... They are Bluff Road addresses. In that, and that right-of-way is on the right side of Bluff Road. So it'll be 342, 46, and 48 Bluff Road. Whereas if we named the road, then they would be measured differently and they would have different numbers and they would have a new street name. And then the two buildings on the right would be even, his building on the left would be odd.
So they're accessing through, like with Columbia Forest...
Correct. Right. There's already truck traffic going in there. In order to be able to position the building, make it all work, maintain the existing turnarounds that are in there, and for him to be able to get trucks in, turned around, this was a mutually agreed upon way to be able to make it happen.
And again, we assured that it's going to, since it's out of the norm, emergency services, obviously, we don't know where it is, but the rest of the emergency services...
So he's going to, Phil is going to, who on his own dime, put the three green number signs out on the sign on the street with each of the entities. And then he will have a lighted sign on his building if you let it ignite.
And we know that in the future, if there's another building built there, then we got to go through the normal stuff.
And this would have to be called a different road name?
Correct. It'd be a private road name.
Private. Obviously, it was just a driveway to get in.
It is. It's just a right-of-way now.
Right now, but it's...
So you're allowed two on a driveway. Two structures on a driveway.
Okay. All right.
So if you kick into the third, it's got to be named.
Yeah, that makes sense. I understand.
So there was a tremendous amount of back and forth between the and the 911 coordinator to make this happen.
Mr. Charbonneau, did you have any questions on this?
I do not.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Then I see no reason why we don't go ahead and approve it.
So, anything else, any questions?
I didn't see any.
So I move to approve the 911 address authorization.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Any discussion on this? And all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, I can't, just couldn't picture a 54-foot truck going down Willie Street. Oh, my God.
Mr. Mayor, just a little bit of housekeeping for me. Is Mr. Howl not here for the DRV or is he here for the fadi poppin'?
I'm here for the 911 coordinator.
Okay. Gotcha. So neither.
He's a man of many hats.
Can I ask why this wasn't in the package for the rest of us, the end with the attachments? It doesn't seem like it was top secret.
I have no clue. I don't, I haven't had time to look at the website to see what's been posted, what hasn't been posted. So unfortunately...
It's not in the attachment, so...
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, could you find out?
Um, Laura, could you find out?
I have to use my phone.
Go ahead.
It should have been posted, so we just find out.
You know, it'd be nice if someone notices something, they don't immediately contact the city manager's office instead of waiting to the council meeting.
We don't know until we get here if it's not in the package because it's not there.
How would we know?
It's generally posted by nine o'clock. If you don't see it, you can email us. You have my email address.
If you see an agenda item that's not attached, I would contact the city manager's office.
Right. That's all you have to do.
Is it on there?
I just texted Becky to ask her if she posted it. I assume she did because we went through it, but we'll find out.
Okay. All right. The next item. Appoint qualified member to the regional emergency management committee. We received a memo from the fire chief. The emergency management planning committee requires two members to be appointed from each community. One is the EMD or Emergency Management Director, who is John, as the fire chief. The other member who needs an appointment is the Public Safety Representative. This is the Chief of Police. So we, basically, we need to appoint Travis Bingham to the... He'd be an alternate to the Regional Emergency Management Planning Committee.
Correct. And I've already spoken to him and he's fine with it.
Questions from council members? Then we would need a motion.
And it's the regional emergency. They changed it from the local to regional.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Chief Bingham to the Regional Emergency Management Planning Committee.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Pedersen. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Kevin?
Kevin, are you voting aye?
Yes.
Okay. Then the motion carries. Cool. Thank you. Okay. The next item is new business. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I've got a piece of hers the council used to sign. It's for the annual line of credit with some bank for a million dollars. We haven't drawn on this for several years, but you don't pay anything unless you draw on it, so...
For a million dollars?
Yeah. But it's a backup in case something happens and we need the money. So we need a motion to authorize it. And three of you can sign where your names are.
So we need a motion to authorize the line of credit.
I move to authorize the $1 million line of credit.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Ms. Pedersen. Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. What was the line of credit for?
$1 million.
No, no, no. What for?
It's the annual line of credit that the city carries.
Gotcha. And what's the interest?
Not that it...
There's no, there's no interest if you don't draw on it.
Very true.
And as Mr. Johnson said, we haven't had to draw on it for many years. Because I can remember...
What the time when we were drawing on it?
Every year.
So is it kind of a safety net, Mr. Johnson?
Yes. I remember that. Every year you had to draw on it and then pay it back.
Ask Kevin if it's at school tomorrow. I'll have Travis run over it.
Kevin, are you at school tomorrow?
Uh, July?
We have a document that would need your signature. Is there a way either someone can...
You want to be home or so Travis can bring it over?
Uh, yeah, we are.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other new business, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
None.
The only new business is, just want to say, the ref department did a good job with the Fourth of July. The fireworks were great. And I already told the fire chief, it looked nice seeing the flag when you come into Newport down the access road. Because when I came home earlier in the day, it looked nice hanging there. So I just want to give a nice compliment on that. Let me see. Now I have no other new business. Anything?
Yeah, I just, a couple, just a question, two questions, actually, just for my clarification for the engineering study for the wastewater treatment facility to deal with the solids. I just don't remember. Is that like the sledge or is that like the wipes and stuff?
That's the sledge. That is a meeting that we had in this room.
Yep.
And we met with Wayne and his colleague Mike Mayner to go over our next short-term plan for improvements in the wastewater treatment plant.
And then on the change for the, the possible change for the certificate of occupancy to make it an easier process? Attaching whatever it's going to get called now to the forms. Is there a mechanism to follow up on that so that once they go away with their form, somebody knows where they're not getting brought back? Yeah?
I can, yeah. Work in progress.
Yeah.
Noticing that the certificate of occupancy really doesn't work and we don't really have the wherewithal to do that. The language doesn't work. So my thought process is to create a certificate, a certificate of completion or a document of completion, generate it, attach it right to the application. The recording fee and everything would be built right into the application. So instead of a $70 permit fee and a $30 certificate fee, it'd be a $100 fee. And it would be their responsibility on completion of the project to send it back to the city. At that point, it would come in either to the ZA or the assessor to know that it's been completed.
So what if somebody doesn't? Do we have a way to track it to see if anybody, if they do or not?
A permit's good for approximately two, is good for two years. So at the end of the two years, all you would have to do is go back through. If you haven't got it back in the mail, then you go pay a visit and see if it's done. That way, people aren't running the ZA or the assessor aren't traveling, checking on permits to see where they are and what they're doing. It's their responsibility when they're done to send it. Document of completion.
Do you know penalty?
No.
Okay, so...
There's no reason. I mean, they're paying for it upfront.
Right. I said, I'm sorry. I just sort of know a lot about this. So is it some kind of requirement for the state that this sort of thing happens? Because if there's no penalty and they don't turn it in, what difference does it make?
Well, this, this is a document for us to be able to streamline and create a line of communications for the applicant when the project's done to notify the city so that the assessor can then go assess the property. We don't have any way to do that right now other than this certificate of occupancy. But we, we don't have code. We don't have compliance officers. We don't have anything to do with occupancy. And it really, it puts us at a line of building by saying the building is occupied. We assume that everything is done to a standard. But we don't have that. So by changing it to a document of completion, in other words, you're building a deck. It's completed. Just mail it into the city.
Okay.
It's done. There's no fees. There's no nothing. It just gets added to the file that this application, 22033, is now being completed. Done deal. The assessor knows about it. He can go and assess the property.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, John, we're going to make sure we get all of those downstairs, notify that. In the past, sometimes we're billing properties that we didn't even know were there. We don't bill them because we don't know if a house has been built or not. We kind of cut a loop.
Sure. That's what this document hopefully is going to help, the line of communication so that everybody knows. Because once that letter comes back in, it's got to be recorded. So that is going to go downstairs.
We've had a problem with that in the past.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
That's what got me thinking about all this.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I just wanted to know, what's the impetus for somebody who's completed the building to let you know when that will generate an assessor coming out and taxes on the property if they just don't let you know that you live there without taxes, right?
They don't know, they have no obligation to do it now. So this is just, here it is. It's attached right to the application when your project's completed.
Right now, the way it's worked in the past, if I understood right, the assessor knew there was something being built and he would periodically check on it.
Well, that's just it. Now you're adding a tremendous amount of... An access is good for two years. So how often are you going to ask somebody to go and take a drive-by?
Right.
I mean, it makes no sense.
Right.
So at least you've got a 50/50 chance when they're done, they fill it out, they send it in. If at the end of the year, you go through all your documents, all your applications, you see the ones that have come in, the ones that haven't, you put them all together and you go for a drive and you see if they've done it.
Meanwhile, we have their $30.
Meanwhile, we've got their $30. They've already paid for it.
It's great the assessor goes out and checks, but the thing is, it'd be great if he, make sure he checks before we bill for taxes. You know? We bill, we bill in August, so if he goes out there in June and says, yeah, new house there, then we know he's billing.
I mean, that's between you and him.
Yeah, I understand.
To set that up in a timely manner. You go out in August and March, you know, whatever.
April 1st is the deadline for that, anyway.
Yeah, well, it's on my bailiwick.
Anything else?
I just wanted to point out that the municipal plan has been completed and I put a copy of the notice for you. The first public hearing is scheduled for August 2nd at the planning commission meeting. Just wanted to draw folks' attention to that. All the material's been posted on our website. So that should be a nice meeting then. The city council will have two public hearings afterward. Just wanted to put it on the record and draw people's attention to it.
Great. Okay. Moving on. Mr. Johnson, old business. No. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, the only thing I have is, and I don't think we're violating any rules, would it be all right to let the public know that the pile of rubble up there on Pleasant Street and why there's a delay? I don't think it's a hush house.
Richard, go ahead.
I just got word today from Jay Gonyer. The samples came back negative. So I called the NMSando and they will be getting the process of getting it out of there.
So the clock is not working now?
Correct.
He has until the 15th. So it should be...
And that includes the tires?
That includes the tires.
Okay. No, the people asked, I've seen it down there.
The problem, the problem was Morris jumped up and knocked it down before we had to pay for it.
Yeah.
So there was a little bit of anxiousness for the delay to get the sample back because if it had come back positive, they would have had to treat the whole pile as positive as opposed to going in and mitigating it. So it came back negative. So it can now go to the dump.
It was like an EPA issue. You have, this stuff has to not be contaminated, right? In order to go to the landfill.
Correct. We need it, they need a document from a lab stating that there was no hazardous material found in the building. And we got it today.
Okay, thanks.
Any other old business?
No. That's the only reason I bring it up because everybody in town, every time they see me, "What are you doing with that old building?" I knew the answer, but...
Before I...
Yeah. No, jennison.
Mr. Charbonneau, do you have any old business?
Big pile of rubble.
No.
Did you have any new business? I'm not sure if I asked you.
Uh, no.
Okay. I didn't. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Old business. I have old business. It's really old business. I'm going to, it's regarding water meters. When the council voted in October of 2020, they never put a deadline. So there's really no incentive to meter. There really absolutely is no incentive to meter in the city because we have an open-ended mandate. We need to revisit this as far as a reasonable amount of time to meter the city. So what I would like to see is a detailed report of how many meters we have left to install. I'm sure we might, we probably can figure out how many that we won't be able to do ourselves because I know there's probably some in the city that it's going to be beyond what we can do. And maybe an estimate or a good, a good solid timeframe of when we can, I think, because I think the council needs to make a motion and some, you know, coming up, maybe in a couple of meetings, have a motion to put an end date on it. Because really, there is, I called up the minutes in October 2020, and there is no end date on the motion. There's a motion to meter the city, mandate meters. So unless you put some teeth in it, people could say, oh, I don't want you coming in my house. I know it's mandated, but there's no end date. So there's no incentive for me. Come back in 10 years. Come back in 20 years. You know? And so we need to revisit that as far as creating some teeth in it. I just wanted to... Tom?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to give you a little heads up that, you know, with everything else going on, I've kind of suspended putting, not that we're getting people calling in. You were ahead in the right direction. I kind of felt the same way. We're seeking people out now. They're not calling us. But I've kind of suspended it because we're being a little bit of a tight spot at the wastewater plant for a while. But I agree. We should put a number, you know, a deadline. Because you're right, there is no incentive. We've kind of talked about that, the whole increase in rates to see if we can set it...
Well, that's what kind of triggered me to... Well, that's what kind of triggered me.
Snap putting them in.
Okay, that's one thing I had under old business. So just something to be working on, you know? Shouldn't take too long. We probably already know how many meters we have left to install. And I think you probably, I think you had a good idea of the ones we wouldn't be able to do because there are some that might have to be...
Typically, if we run into one, we'll try to line up somebody to help us put it in.
Oh, okay. All right.
And we may have to do that with some others to get it going.
And there's a few places... Right, right. Okay. That's just one thing.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. When Mr. Bernie says the wastewater plant's gonna be in a tight spot, what does that mean?
Well, we've, we've got some turnover. So we're, we're in position down and we are recruiting, if you know anybody, or if you yourself. But we do have a recruitment up in right now.
So you have staff shortage?
Yes.
Okay. And additional old business. We've only had one application for zoning administrator, from what I can tell. That has a close yet? When's it close? What's the closing date?
The closing date's the 15th.
Oh, the 15th? Oh, not, I thought it had already closed.
So I, I wouldn't really discuss in open session how many we've received.
Okay. Well, the only reason why I was bringing it up is because it seems like we've had a hard time recruiting for that position. And I really think it's time to make the decision to analyze combining it, the ZA and assessor like it used to be many years ago, and make it a full-time position instead of part-time positions. That's why, only reason why I asked because I know we've had difficulty recruiting over the last couple of years. It's not, and I apologize, I thought the date had closed already. It was the 15th. Okay, but that's the reason why I think we really need to look at combining it into one position again and make it a full-time position. There's something to be thinking about. So I had that under old business. Then I guess the only other thing could have been new or old. Are we gonna have a report on Gardena Park and the environmental? Because I know a preliminary report had come out in January and it's now July. I think it's time to have a presentation. I would hope maybe Michael would love to see in September because the report's been out, well, the preliminary one was out in January and about, you know, the EPA report. And I think the public has a right to know and the council has a right to have a presentation on that, on Gardena Park. And so I would hope in September, we could have a presentation by the parties involved.
That's probably a good timing. The Department of Environmental Conservation hasn't quite solidified the corrective action plan. We've got one more study that we're expecting from a consultant who did the borings. So we hope we're gonna have those in hand over the next two to three weeks. At that point, we should, we should be able to come to the council with a cost estimate as well as a plan of action. And during this time, there's been optimism actually because when we first started this, it was gonna be an overwhelming magnitude. The more studies that they're doing, the more within our reach it is. So I think we'll have some good news.
And then I guess the other thing I should have brought up on the new business, but it's nice to see the state's willing to help us with the empty block. I saw the governor's interview on Channel 3 and of course, we had our conversation with them. And it's good to see that they're willing to help step up to the plate for them. That's all I had. Any old business?
I, kind of a curiosity question. I saw in the park that the swings are back up and I know that, was it 2020 maybe, '19? That there's a press release at the VT, the Mount City of Lees in Towns that said that the equipment was not safe and so the decision was made to shut down the park because they were gonna redo it in the next spring, which made sense. Were the swings part of the equipment that wasn't safe? Or was it just everything taken out just because it was, winter was coming?
I think we got a new swing set because people are using the park even though they shouldn't. So in order to provide some leisure and a resource while we're waiting, I believe we just got a relatively, I think it's a new swing set that was installed over the past six weeks.
We took out, everything that was removed from the playground was deemed unsafe. So there are a couple structures still left there. And the structure of the swings was there. They took the chains and swings down. Believe that's what they redid and put up. Those structures were just gonna get rehabbed, painted. They were gonna remain in the playground. Everything else that was removed was deemed unsafe.
Right. Yeah, I, yeah, just because I thought, I feel all the swings are down and then I decided, I don't care if they're there or not personally, but...
Oh, you don't worry?
Not ever since in like fourth grade when Gary Bauer swung so hard he went over the top.
Okay. Anything else on the old business, Laura? Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, the equipment that's in now, that's usable, that's new, it's worth the swings are new and...
Just one swing set. So if you go down there, you'll see there's a total of two. There's one swing set. That's a new addition. But it's just enough to bridge it.
And when you say people shouldn't be used to the park, Mr. Mayor, do you mean the playground or, because to me, to me, that's a broad term. So and we'll all do expect, Mr. Mayor, so what does that mean?
The playground area. Remember the proposal for the rehabilitation for the playground and the installation of the slash pad?
Yes.
That's still pending.
That's, that's tied into the environmental. And that's why I was hoping to have that because I'm getting a lot of questions on that whole thing. And that's why I thought September would be good to try to move it along.
So Mr. Mayor, so the park is usable for picnics, concerts, or...
Well, they had a big softball tournament.
Yeah, exactly my point.
They lived back down there all weekend. I mean, there's a lot of high-falutin economic activity, people coming in.
So everything that's there now is safe, Mr. Mayor, the swings are... Gotcha.
Just don't swing too hard.
All right. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, July 18th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Now we need a motion to adjourn at 7:12.
Move to adjourn?
Motion made by Ms. Pedersen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson.